Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the June 2nd, 2021 meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're delighted to have each of you with us this evening, and at this time, we would ask that Ms. La Magna review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the commission chambers. All exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted in the lobby. Please feel free to view the exhibits at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak before the city commission during the business meeting. Forms are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the room of the commission chambers. You must complete the sections and ask for your name, address, agenda item number, signature and date. The form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Agenda items under item number nine are public hearings, and citizens may speak at the designated time. Resolutions under administrative items number 10 are open for public comments, and you may fill out a yellow form to speak when that item is called. Item number seven is your opportunity to address the city commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items that you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. All citizens completing a yellow form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach a lectern, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The two and a half minute clock on the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time. You will be told when your time has expired. Item number 13 is the public comment forum, and it will convene after the adjournment of the business meeting. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue that is not on the business meeting agenda. All citizens completing the green form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach a lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the city commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Ordinances reads as follows: "It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the city commission or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting, or to refuse to obey any ruling of the presiding officer for such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed." Please silence cell phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Ms. La Magna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Delgado.
Present.
Mr. May. Commissioner Cantu.
Here.
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Traeger.
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry.
Here. We will now have our invocation by Commissioner Henry, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Delgado.
Gracious Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to gather again today. We thank you for all that you have given us and all of the requirements that you have required of us. We ask and pray, Heavenly Father, that you will bless us, that you will guide us, and that you will lead us as we make the very best decisions for the citizens of Daytona Beach. In your son Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the May 5th, 2021 regular city commission meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Take a motion from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner Reed. Do we have any questions or comments about the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This motion carries 6-0. At this time, we will have our agenda approval. If there are any changes, our city manager, Mr. Fiecher, will address them.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Commissioners, we do have two changes that we want to present. We're asking that Agenda Item 10B, Relative to the Beach Street State Phase 2, be removed from the agenda. Also, during a discussion with Commissioner May, a request was made for Andy Holmes to give a TPO update. And Mayor, we discussed that, and you said that will be fine at the beginning of the meeting. Those are the only two changes we have for tonight's meeting.
Motion to accept the agenda with the said changes.
Second.
Have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Delgado. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. May the record reflect that Commissioner May is also present.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number six, and we're going to do the added presentation by the Public Works Director, Andrew Holmes, on the TPO.
Good evening, Andy Holmes, Public Works, and thank you for the opportunity to give you this brief update on the TPO activities. I sit on the Technical Coordinating Committee on behalf of the City of Daytona Beach, and our function on the technical committee is to review and comment on technical issues and to make recommendations to the full board that Commissioner May sits on. Our last meeting was Tuesday, May 18th, and at that meeting, there were a couple of items of significant interest to the City of Daytona Beach. We reviewed and approved a recommendation of approval for an amendment to the Transportation Improvement Plan, and this is the list of projects that get funded by the TPO. So this is very significant because a project cannot get funded if it's not listed on the Transportation Improvement Plan. We did two projects, added two projects that were significant to Daytona. One is the Fremont Avenue sidewalk. We programmed construction funding of just short of $320,000 for that project. And then the second project, we increased funding for design of the Safe Routes to School project, which is another sidewalk project in the vicinity of Campbell Middle School and the small elementary school. The increased funding for design is for this current fiscal year. $171,177 for that. And we increased the construction funding, which is in fiscal '23-'24, to $952,000. So those are two significant positives for the City of Daytona Beach. Also reviewed, funding set-asides for the next five years of traffic operations, $5.7 million, and bike and ped for $3.2 million. And that does not include the coronavirus response and relief funds that they're anticipating getting some of those, too. So some very positive funding news from the TPO. The I-95 resurfacing project in our within the limits of Daytona Beach is starting up now. It's about an $18 million project, and it will last approximately to next early summer, late spring, early summer next year. This is Millen Resurface from just south of Dunn Avenue to Airport Road in Ormond Beach. So lots of good transportation improvements coming to our city. Be happy to take any questions.
B, please.
Yeah, East ISB, we've received revised plans from FDOT that are minimizing the amount of utility work that we have to do, so that cost is going to be less than we anticipated. And FDOT is going to be starting the design of the underground utilities there for us. But they've got to have right-of-way in place to do that. And so the right-of-way acquisition phase is just about to begin for FDOT.
And I'm asking these questions for the people at home who are listening.
Sure.
So we're still on track for start dates, and everything seems to be progressing really nicely, then.
It is progressing. I can't speak specifically whether they're going to make their start date, but they're doing all the activities as if they're trying to do that.
And then also, could you please address, we addressed it in the meeting on the Wednesday, could you please address your impressions of, let's say, the west side, LPGA area? Do you have any thoughts on what's going to be happening there in terms of funding for improving the transportation at all?
We've gotten an invoice for the $250,000 that the commission voted to contribute to the PDNE study for the bridge replacement over the Timoca River. And I know that they are moving ahead with that PDNE study, and they've extended that study. So the limits are basically from the west side of the interchange all the way to ISB, to West ISB, along LPGA Boulevard. And so that's very positive indication for that area.
Sure, and so then my request is to the commission, if you have any areas of concern in your local zones, if you could just let me know, send me a quick note so that I can address it at the TPO meeting and bring up some of your concerns. Thank you. Thank you so much, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Happy to help.
Thanks, Andy.
And if we send that note, we'll make sure that we send it through Bob's office so that if it comes to something that we have to vote on, or just make sure that we don't correspond back and forward, as we know. But I know Bob normally would say that, so I'm surprised he didn't say it.
Thank you. Should have stepped in, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that it? All right. Good job, Andy. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number seven. This is citizen comments by people addressing the city commission on any item that is on the consent agenda. And I have one speaker, Mr. John Nicholson. I believe he's speaking on 8C.
And as he's coming, Andy, the manager is going to ask you to give me some kind of correspondence on what you just talked about as I have a presentation. Thank you.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. With regard to the flooding, I used to work on Nova and Orange Avenue for several years, and when it flooded, it flooded. Water went into those homes when somebody went down Keith Street, and it's still happening. The last flooding on the corner of Fairview and Beet Street, just inches away from the new Broner Brown building, it floods up to like four feet. So you can't come off of Main Street Bridge because you're going to go into water. They had to close down from Fairview to Mason Avenue on Beet Street because that flooded. So I'm asking you to be a holistic look at all over the city where it's flooding. I mean, these things have been flooding for years. So rather than, I understand that this became available, and it's wise to do it when you can, but I'm also asking for a plan to look at those places that have been flooding for decades, and we take a look at it seriously because we're going to have more and more flooding as time goes on, and we might as well plan now to fix those things. Thank you.
And that was my only speaker for the consent agenda.
All right, I would ask that AD be moved to the regular meeting for education purposes. All right, do I have a motion? Would that change?
I'll move that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Have a motion from Commissioner Delgado and Commissioner May is the second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Moving on to item number nine, which is our public hearing. Item 9A is Development Administrative Services Planning Division, Neighborhood F, Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on first reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment in accordance with Chapter 163, Part 2 Florida statutes, deleting a Neighborhood F future land use policy that prohibits retail uses on properties adjacent to South Ridgewood Avenue from South Street to Wilder Boulevard, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner May and a second from Commissioner Delgado.
I have no speakers for this item.
No speakers, okay. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Moving on to item number 9B. It's the Public Works Clyde Morris Landings Preliminary and Final Plat Approval. This is a resolution pursuant to judicial hearing. A resolution approving the preliminary and final plat for the Clyde Morris Landings project, a mixed-use development of approximately 37.9 acres of land located on the east side of Clyde Morris Boulevard, 2,000 feet south of LPGA, authorizing the city manager to sign the final plat and permit recordation, thereupon meeting certain conditions precedent, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner May and a second from Commissioner Delgado.
And I do have Jessica Gao here on behalf of the applicant for any question.
Any questions for Ms. Gao? No questions? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
And for the record, I had no other speakers for this item. Moving on to item number 9C. It's the Public Works Department Preliminary and Final Plat for Champion's Quarter Project. This is a resolution pursuant to judicial hearing. A resolution approving the preliminary and final plat for Champion's Quarters, a single-family subdivision located on the north side of Clyde Morris Boulevard, east of Jimmy Ann Drive, authorizing the city manager to sign the final plat and permit recordation, thereupon meeting certain conditions precedent, providing for recordation, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Delgado, second from Commissioner May.
And I do have Jessica Gao here on behalf of the applicant for any questions, and no others.
All right. We have a motion and a second. No questions for Jessica. All those in favor, let it be noted. Which item is this, 10A?
9C.
9C. Okay, I'll make sure I'm not on the wrong one. Got to highlight her in the wrong place. Okay, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you.
We're now going to move on to item number 10, which is our administrative items. Item number 10A is Development Administrative Services Planning Division, MLK Lofts Plan District Agreement Extension Resolution. A resolution extending development deadlines established by the MLK Lofts Plan District Agreement, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. This is, was the one I was making sure I didn't have notes in. I had some concerns with this item. I just want to make sure, is the applicant here?
Yes, sir.
You are? Okay. I don't have any questions. I just want to make sure that we, as a staff, ask that our manager would check to make sure that what else you guys are doing over the next two years besides simply sitting and waiting to receive the tax credits for the property. You can feel free to address that, but I want staff to, I know that you're waiting on the hope of getting the lottery, but you know, only 10% of the folks get the lottery.
Yes, very.
And that's better than the normal lottery, but this particular lottery. So I'm asking that the staff would, you know, even consider a reverter clause, and if not that, at least moving forward that we would be able to do that. But just monitor what they're doing, and after monitoring what they're doing, then if this comes back to us later, we wouldn't approve that. You have anything that, any thoughts to that?
Yeah. Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, staff has talked about this, what other steps could be done earlier in the day. Just if the lottery does not make its way back to them, how do we work with the beneficial communities partners, Heron, to try to figure out if there are other ways to do this project? So I know you all are going through the process for the lottery and the tax credits, but if there are other areas where we can go after additional funding or work with you all, if the lottery does not take place, how do we make sure we still get those type of affordable units on that particular property? And I think that's just something we need to discuss after we've gone through the Commissioners approving this. But we want to make sure it's a viable project even if the lottery doesn't come for you all, but it's still something that you can work with different partners to make sure it happens in that community.
Gotcha. Well, Ken Bowron Jr. with Beneficial Communities addressed to North Cami Ami Trail in Sarasota, Florida. And yes, we are going to be going for tax credits again this year. The application actually just got pushed up quite a bit, so it'll be at the end of August this year. Typically, it's around October, but this year, it's at the end of August. So we got a quick turnaround time this year. If we're not lucky enough to get tax credits this year, that's kind of up to also the landowner, Heron Development. We're under contract with them, and we need to talk with them to see how we can proceed going forward. We would love to see affordable housing done on that site. There's different, the best financing for that is the low-income housing tax credit. There's the 9% round, but there's also something called the 4% round. And we haven't ran the numbers for that 4% deal yet. That's something I can do and get back to staff with and see how that works. But it'd also be up to Heron Development to extend a contract with an amendment if they want to work with us more.
Okay. It's just my perspective is that we did about as much as we could humanly do
Yes.
to try to help them to be able to do a project. And so it's time to now get something done. And if they can't, then I don't think we should continue to do this. We should just eliminate, you know, what we've done and, because we've done a lot in terms of, you know, making the exceptions.
Gotcha.
Okay. And I understand he's not here, but, you know, and Jeff is free to call us or whatever, but I'm sure he's watching. Okay.
Gotcha.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I guess I'm going to defer to Commissioner Reed on this. This is in your zone, Commissioner Reed, and I'm just wondering, what are your thoughts in terms of moving forward?
Well, I am glad that, can you all hear me? I am glad that they are pursuing this. I am, I was disappointed that it took so long for them to demolish the properties, which I know is not your concern, but that needs to be so noted. And I concur that if nothing does not happen, then it is time to move on. We have had this particular property on hold for a couple of years, and I know we couldn't apply last year because New Smyrna got it. Only one city in the county can do it, and you can't do it consecutive years. So they couldn't apply the last year. I'm glad that the deadline has moved forward because now with the moving forward, hopefully, we'll know by October or November, rather than waiting to November, October, not finding out until January, and then we'll know how to proceed. So thank you for all that you are striving to do for us. I know you do a beautiful project, and I look forward to something being on that site.
Same here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a motion and a second?
I do have speakers, Mr. Mayor, on this item.
Oh, we do? My apologies.
Our first speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Ken Bowron. Oh, sorry. And on deck is Sandy Murphy.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. My concern with this is, as you recall, there was another affordable housing on Madison and Beet Street who was applying for the grant, and we took the backing from them for this project. We've also, from the City General Fund, put almost $3 million into this project, the remodeling of MLK and the parking lot behind it. So we have a lot vested in this. But like what happens on the beachside, things sit for years and years and years. We have a project on the beachside that we've been sitting on for 30 years. It's right there on the boardwalk, and it's not doing us much good. I am glad that Ms. Reed made a comment I am glad that, uh, Ms. Reed, uh, made a comment that if nothing is happening, we have to pursue other interests. And there are several options, and I would ask again, uh, as you said, that they search for those other options. You don't put all your eggs in one basket. This is something that Ms. Reed wants, and it's something that the mayor's been pushing, affordable housing. So it's, it's, uh, what everybody wants, we just have to find a way of solving it, but we can't sit on our hands forever. Thank you.
In, in my studies of logic, that would be described as absurdium ridiculi, to say that the use of, uh, funds to resurface MLK is tied to this project. That was done because it needed to be done.
Mm-hmm.
And it should have been done 20 years ago. Um, so, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, and it was voted on prior to this project. It was going to be done regardless.
Period.
Period.
Sandy Murphy, 136 Park Avenue. I'm in favor of the project, but I, I share your concern that things haven't progressed more clearly from here. Um, one thing that worries me is hearing that they haven't run projections for 4% because you know the, the odds of getting that 9% money are very low. And if they're gonna be serious about pursuing any sources, that should be part of the figuring from the get-go. So I would like to see something else from them saying, what is Plan B, Plan C, rather than put ourselves in a situation where that parcel isn't gonna be developed for another two years if this is approved. Thank you.
And my final speaker is Pierre Lewis.
Yeah, and, and it's my understanding, and that's what I'm expecting staff to do. Uh, we, we don't have to continue in this way. Okay, Mr. Lewis?
Pierre Lewis, 130 South Franklin Street, even to the mayor, to the commissioners, to the citizens. My only comments, I'm for the project too, and I'd like to see something that's going on there. I was reading the recent, uh, news articles. I like, first like to thank, uh, City Commissioner Reed for some of her comments, as you said, that's there because of the fact that looking at having the sort of apartments on the top and the retail down there, and the reason I mention that is because if you look at the Midtown, our master plan that we have, when you look in that particular area, there's five neighborhood plans that are supposed to be there. One area says that, in that area right there, that extends from ISB down to where Orange Avenue is at, that's considered, that's supposed to be Midtown, um, Main Center is what it is. And when you look at that, it says in the master plan, the way that's supposed to be done, it's structured so that it's a cultural environment that's there that's built for retail. Now, how this type of project, like a, a Lydic project came in, I don't know. I mean, I know how, I understand how it works and stuff like that. But when you look at the master plan, how it's set up, that area where it's structured, where this particular item is going, is right smack dab in the middle of what's called that Midtown Main Center Plan, and that's what's there. So I would ask the City Commission that, as you start to distinguish and rule upon that, you look at how this master plan is designed, how, how we're supposed to be going towards that, because a lot of that stuff that's there will clear up some of those answers to say that if the Heron Group or another particular person, not being on them, another person, we follow what's in that master plan. And that would be constructing something that's similar to what you were talking about, Commissioner Reed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lewis?
You're welcome.
Can I ask you a question, sir? How old is that plan? I'm just curious.
Well, well, as a comment, as I said, when they first did this plan, there's actually three. There's the master plan, the PMG study, and then, uh, the element that's the area plan. The first one was done in 1997, I believe that was the original one. Then it was amended, and then they did one in 2012. They didn't, you have a master, uh, area plan in 2012. I'm sorry, that's the next one I was done in. The PMG study was done in 2013. The reason I mention all three of those, because when you look at them comprehensively, the way they're supposed to work together, it talks about retail, it talks about how the whole design of that is supposed to work together. But I think what's happening is, I always look at it, I talk to my friends like this, I talk to them. You know, the, the hobo that comes in, he's got a bunch of holes in his pockets, and they keep patching the different holes. It still makes a pair of pants, but it's not symbolically works together. You see what I'm getting at? And that's what I think is what's going on, because we've had this master plan for a number of years. But what happens is we keep having project after project after project, but it doesn't work along with this plan that's here. As you see from my highlights, I've studied and read it, because I'm under Midtown, I'm in the board. So it's our position, well, no, I shouldn't say our position. It's my position as I look at that, is if we read that and we follow along with that, we don't have this sort of spotty kind of thing that's going on in Midtown area. Because I think if we keep doing that long enough, we'll never really have that comprehensive plan that builds on this, and builds on this the next year, and builds on this the next year. So when I saw it in the paper, I said, why would they have that? Because there's a neighborhood plan that's designed that's right there. That's what the master plan says. If the neighborhood, if those five neighborhood plans are there, it's supposed to have cultural places and retail places that are there, why would we even consider that? It's like when we had the motorcycle club that, that decided to come, and they're like, why would they consider it? Because the master plan says that an African-American museum is supposed to be there. Honestly, I think what's happening is, you've got this plan, the paper is there, the implementation, because there's implementation schedules that are there that says we were supposed to complete by 2015. And it's 2021, and I look at some of those bullets, and I think to myself, wow, okay. I'll let that one go.
We, we get the point, but you also have, we all also have to be cognizant of the fact that the market truly drives in large part.
Totally agree.
You know, what happens.
I agree.
That doesn't mean you shouldn't have standards and expectations and aspire to build according to the plan.
Of course. I, I understand, because they got a master plan on Beet Street. The market drives that and drives us too.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And that was my final speaker on this item.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or further comments? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Item 10B was pulled from tonight's agenda, so we're gonna move on to item 10C, which is the City Manager's Office Economic Development Board Appointment Resolution. A resolution appointing one member to the Economic Development Advisory Board to serve a three-year term expiring February 28, 2024, and providing an effective date. Ms. Betty Goodman to present.
Good evening. This agenda item is to appoint one member to the Economic Development Advisory Board. We have three applicants for the one position. Mark Card, Christos Maronis, and Devon Morris. Therefore, this will be a ballot vote.
You want me to vote twice?
No.
No. Yeah, no, I'm just teasing. Henry. Thank you.
Commissioner Traeger, Christos Maronis. Commissioner Delgado, Christos Maronis. Commissioner May, Maronis. Commissioner Henry, Maronis. I'm sorry, that was Mayor Henry, Maronis. Commissioner Henry Morris, Devon Morris. Commissioner Cantu, Mark Card. And Commissioner Reed, Devon Morris.
Four votes for Christos.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to, um, Chris Maronis.
Second. We have a motion and a second. No further comment or questions. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
And there was no public comment for that matter.
No.
Moving on to item 10D, it's the City Manager's Office Historic Preservation Board Appointments Resolution. A resolution appointing four members to the Historic Preservation Board for three-year terms expiring April 14, 2024, and providing an effective date. Betty Goodman.
This agenda item is to appoint four members to the Historic Preservation Board. The first appointment is really a reappointment of Roman Yurkowitz to architect. May we please have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner May, second from Commissioner Traeger.
Okay, we can do the entire slate, Mayor.
All right.
Okay. The second is Fernando Neves, appointment to Zone Two. Commissioner Delgado.
So moved.
Okay, all right. The third is Joseph Vetter, appointment for Zone Six. Commissioner Reed.
So moved. Second.
And the last is Alicia Mompoint, and it's an at-large appointment, Mayor Henry.
Um, if someone would motion for me?
So moved.
Okay, well, we'll just do the whole slate at one time.
Right.
Yeah, so I, I would want to appoint Mompoint.
So will someone nominate the entire slate?
Motion to nominate the entire slate?
Second.
All right, uh, we have a motion from Commissioner Delgado and a second from Commissioner Reed. Um, no questions, no public speakers?
No public speakers.
All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Moving on to item 10E, it's the City Manager's Office Personnel Board Appointment Resolution. A resolution appointing one member to the Personnel Board for a four-year term expiring June 16, 2025, and providing an effective date. Ms. Betty Goodman to report.
We have one application for this one opening, and that is from Cindy Singer, and it's also a mayoral nomination.
So moved.
Okay, how do you all know I want Cindy Singer? I know she's the only one on there, but I might wanna go back and, that's good.
He's good.
I didn't know, I'm kidding. Who, who made the motion?
Commissioner Cantu.
Commissioner Cantu, and who made the second? Commissioner Delgado. All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any public speakers?
We do not.
All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Motion carries, seven zero. Thank you, Ms. Goodman.
We're now gonna move back to item 8E, which was pulled from the consent agenda by Mayor Henry. Um, 8E is the Public Works Technical Services Division, PNS Caving Inc., Derbyshire Neighborhood Sidewalks Project Bid Award Resolution. A resolution accepting the bid of PNS Caving Inc. for the Derbyshire Neighborhood Sidewalks Project Phase One for a total amount of $746,919.80, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the contract in accordance with the bid documents and return of the bid security of all unsuccessful bidders, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Henry and a second from Commissioner Delgado. Um, well, I, I asked for education purposes. Um, not all sidewalks are created equal in a city. And this one is not equal to most sidewalks. It's probably one of the most dangerous, uh, streets that you have for young people to try to get to a recreation center in, in our city. So, um, the manager was sharing with me how, uh, we were discussing earlier today how this street will be connected to others, and how, you know, and I, I know the street, and I know, you know, when we built the Scarlet Golden Center, immediately, the first thing that we said was we wanted these sidewalks. Uh, and, you know, unfortunately, things don't happen as quickly as we sometimes want them to happen. Uh, and we're just fortunate that we haven't had serious, to my knowledge, catastrophic, uh, accidents along this roadway. But this is something that, you know, when I was commissioner, I would have wanted to have a block party, knowing that this was coming in, coming to fruition. And for me, it's that big a deal, because it really is a big step to making our community safer on all fronts. So I wanna commend, uh, staff for making this happen, and, um, I wanna make sure that we get the word out, uh, just how big and how important this is. Thank you.
Mayor, I will say that, um, Andy, um, with Public Works, that was one of the, the key things when I met with him. Um, he has a, the master plan that deals with that park and how he believes that the connectivity is needed for sidewalks. So I'm just commending him and his staff, because the presentation he provided me, this demonstrates that he wants to make sure that there is connectivity and that there is safety for not only the children, but parents that may be all in them. So I applaud him and his staff for what he's done on this item, and I think we're gonna see more of this in the future.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Um, all right, we have a motion. Do you all have any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero. Uh, all right, we are now moving on to commission comments. Uh, Commissioner Delgado?
First, I wanna welcome, uh, Mr. Derek Feature, and say, welcome aboard. I, I don't know if we were gonna do it formally or not, but I wanted to welcome you aboard, and, uh, you know, welcome, and you hit the ground running and without much fanfare, but we're excited to have you here and looking forward to great things. So welcome, um, and obviously you came at the end of an exciting weekend, so that was quite the weekend to welcome you to Daytona Beach.
Yeah.
All of Orlando came out to say hi to you, and you were not found, so.
The chief kept me off beachside.
That's why they were all there, that was the big show, they were looking for you. Um, yeah, that was a, that was a, a very stressful weekend, and I think our police force did a great job managing it. Um, you know, obviously, I think they were forewarned about it, and I know that there were a lot of police officers. I think maybe most of the department seemed like they was out in force. I mean, I saw high-ranking people at the stop signs and all up and down. So, um, you know, I think there was maybe one or two, uh, serious incidents, but for the most part, we did a really good job of controlling and containing that situation. So on behalf of my neighborhood area and all that, we really appreciate that. It was, uh, much better than it had been in previous years, so we wanna thank you for doing that. Um, obviously, now we know that's kind of a recurring event, and it seemed that was the intersection of several different events. Um, the shutting down of the beach was, I mean, a good tactical move, I think it was necessary. I think there were some people that were caught off guard by that. Um, so I don't know if in the future, if that's gonna be a recurring thing, maybe advertise that in advance, so, um, you know, the people can make their plans. As I got several complaints from people that, that they were trapped in traffic for a long period of time and stuff like that, but it really can't be helped. I mean, probably better that you be waisted in traffic than you have rioting or anything else that could have gone on, so. Um, and lastly, on a personal note, um, people have been asking me, my house, I have a for-sale sign outside my house, I'm not getting a divorce, I'm not dying, as far as I know. Um, I guess I'm not getting a divorce, as far as I know either. Um, everything is perfectly wonderful and fine in my life, as far as I know. I'm still a resident of Daytona Beach, I'm still a resident of Zone Two, and even if my house sells, I am still a resident of Zone Two by virtue of my other, um, properties and things like that. So I'm not going anywhere, you guys don't get rid of me that easily, you have to deal with that in two years. But I know there's been some concern, and some people have asked questions, I always wanna be very upfront. I don't generally like to talk about my private life, but because that seemed like something that people were asking me, I wanted to be transparent about that. And again, it's not motivated by anything other than I have young kids, and my wife and I would like to explore different options as far as where we raise our kids, as opposed to being directly on a river in Halifax, which is not a place you wanna let your four-year-old try to learn to bike or anything like that, given that people rush by there all given time. So that's all it is, nothing more, nothing less, and I have every intention of continuing to be a resident of Daytona Beach in Zone Two, as long as I'm an elected city commissioner. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
You normally don't do that, uh, but let's, um, while we're on the topic of the beachside, um, let's ask the chief if he wants to sort of address that, because, um, the one concern that I did have is, as it relates to people who live over there, and I, I did ask the city attorney, we have some discussion, but I'll let you talk about your plan.
Good evening, commission. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Manager. So to say the least, we had a very interesting weekend on the beachside. We had, uh, multiple events scheduled for Saturday. Um, we had the concert series on the band shell, we had a block party on Main Street, and then we had the unsanctioned event of Orlando Invades Daytona. So I brought all of my resources in at noon, and we had a mass briefing at the Ocean Center at noon, and I asked those officers to do three things, and I'm very proud of them, because they did all three. I asked them to pack their patience, pack their professionalism, and above all, do not panic. Because I had a feeling, once, uh, the Orlando Invades Daytona crowd started to come into town, which they did later in the afternoon, and then some of the other, uh, patrons started to come in town for the other events, it was gonna get a little bit chaotic. Um, so we coordinated with Beach Patrol, and at about 4:00, the Beach Patrol made the decision based on overcrowding on the beach, and then they had a couple disturbances on the beach. They made the decision to close the beach to all non-residents. So that was their decision, but I took up a position on the roof of the Hilton Hotel, uh, South Tower, so I could see all of Atlantic Avenue, I could see what was coming off of the beach onto the hardtop, I could also see the bridges. So just looking at all of that, what was coming off of the beach, as well as what was coming over to the beachside at the same time, we made the decision, um, for public safety, to just go ahead and shut off eastbound coming over while they dumped, uh, while they dumped off of the beach onto Atlantic Avenue. Also, I received some law enforcement-sensitive information, uh, that there was some stuff out there on social media, that some folks that were coming into town, they were on the way, advertised it being on the way, and they were toting firearms. So, and I saw that, that confirmed my decision that we were going to hold the bridges to make sure that those folks never reached their final destination of Atlantic Avenue, because if we remember last year, we made national media. So my goal was, not on my watch, we're not gonna make national media this year. So I would rather have some of our local residents upset because they were delayed than to deal with what could have happened. Because if we remember last year, we had a shooting with two people shot, non-life-threatening injuries, and then we also had a pursuit in the South End neighborhood, the South End Lenox Park neighborhood, all within the span of an hour. And I felt like, you know, we always do an after-action report or an after-action study of what we could have done differently, or what we could have done better. And that was one thing, I said, you know what? If, had we cut off those bridges, once it got to a certain point, we probably could have avoided those incidents. So that was the decision that I made based on, on what I saw. And I have to tell you, um, there used to be a time when folks would see a police car, marked police car with flashing lights, and they would say, you know what? I'm not sure what's going on, but I thank you for protecting me for any potential hurt, harm, and danger. Those days are over, because when they saw that, people just, they got very, very upset. I'll put it to you that way. Um, so one thing I know I can do better, and that I will do moving forward, is make sure I notify all of you that that decision has been made, because I probably could have saved myself half a dozen incoming phone calls once that, once the bridges went on lockdown, because everybody, of course, wanted to know what was going on. So I've already committed to memory that, moving forward, if I have to make a decision like that, I'll just send out a mass text, say, hey, heads up, this is why we're doing this. You know, I could fill you guys in later in detail, but I'm making this decision, you know, out of an abundance of caution. Um, secondly, well, moving forward, next, not this weekend, but next weekend, we have the trucks rolling back into town, truck meet. So I feel like this past weekend was almost like a dry run for what we're going to be dealing with next weekend, which is June 10th, 11th, 12th, and the 13th. And from what I've been told, this one is probably going to be the largest one that we've seen. Folks are making up for lost time now that things are opened up, and this one is going to be big. So what we're doing is, we've canceled days off for all of our resources for next weekend, so I have my full contingency of officers. We've also reached out for mutual aid from the sheriff's office and surrounding agencies. And the, the big thing, the most important thing is, I wanna go back to the old-school parking permit system, or the, the access system where we used to have the pink peak. And what we wanna do is, I want to designate the Main Street Bridge for residents, business owners, uh, public safety officials, and of course, city officials, so everybody will get a, a pass, and we're gonna distribute them from both the beachside precinct as well as the main station. So all anyone would have to do is come in and show their ID ahead of time, and they'll get their pink pass, and we'll hold the Main Street Bridge just for those folks, for residents, business owners, and, you know, public safety personnel, city officials, you know, so on and so forth. And that way, it should alleviate what happened this past weekend. Because that wasn't the goal, you know, I never want to inconvenience our residents, but again, I just did that out of an abundance of caution. And I think going back to what we used to do in our BCR days, I think it worked well. And I think that is a, I think that's a, a great compromise.
May, ask a question about this, please. So a lot of hotels, explain to me how this impacts the hotels and their guests with the pot, with the pink pass? How does this work for them?
Well, for them, you still have, well, during the day, all bridges will be open. Like around check-in time, all of those bridges will be open. But once we get to a certain point, and we're watching the other bridges, because it, I think it'll work now primarily because we finally have the Orange Avenue Bridge back open. So you have Orange Avenue Bridge, you have Speedway Bridge, and you still have the Seabreeze Bridge. Most people coming in town from out of town, they only know one way. They get on Speedway, and they stay on Speedway, and they go over that bridge. So that's the plan.
Okay, and then the thing we discussed in addition to texting everybody, which I really appreciate that, I was fielding a lot of phone calls from people on beachside, and then calling businesses also. Um, I'm wondering if we have some way we can notify residents? So I recognize that we don't know when these invasions are gonna take place, but to have any kind of communication system that does not involve the resident researching for themselves.
Yes, thank you, I left that part off. Um, we're gonna do a better job with messaging. I do have a public information officer, and moving forward, every event, he's going to be in my back pocket. He's gonna be out with me, so when I start noticing things, he can stay on top of sending out messages, and we do that via all of our social media outlets, and we do it through our police department app.
But, but do we have a, like a, we need, and I don't know if we have this, a texting system? Um, even if we had to pay for it, where we text all of our residents who live in Daytona Beach, that this is what's going on? Uh, and they have programs like that?
There's a company in Ormond, I think, does that with law enforcement, where they can blast, text everyone, or we could just have like an opt-in, like, text Pound Daytona and get alerts or something like that.
Right.
Do we have a system like that yet?
I'm not sure, but that's something I can look into. I think we may have something that will work, but let, let me look into it.
Do you anticipate the, the pink peak system being in place for this?
Yes.
This weekend?
For, no, no, next weekend, not this weekend, next weekend. So I wanna blast out all advertisement starting tomorrow. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, you have a comment?
Yeah, one of the concerted efforts that we're planning on making after conversations with the chief, but also with our communications team, is trying to find that particular system, how we all, all three or four- how we all, all three or four of us together, work to make sure that once, once something goes out, it goes on all of our social media platforms, our website, and finding a link, probably utilizing the police department's new app, that a person could go on there, if they have access to that app, they always know when there's updates coming on. If we can't get a system in place to alert people who sign up for a texting.
Are we involved with the neighborhood, through their neighborhood apps? Are we involved with them at all? Do we put out information? Because those are very good.
That's included in, in our social media outlet. And then the other thing is, you know, in the event that we have someone that, let's say, someone's getting a late delivery, and a, and a delivery truck needs to get over. It's, it's all about just having the right person there with common sense. They may not have the pink P, but they're legitimately going over to make a delivery. They'll be, they'll be allowed access over as well.
We have Ormond using something called Code Red, which is a, a system that you can opt into, and they text you for weather alerts and all that. But I, I know that that's what they use. I've even gotten phone calls from Ormond, like there's someone missing or whatever. So I think Code Red is the company that, and they're on Ormond Beach that administers. That'd be great if you have the ability to like send a message out to everybody. That'd be great.
We'll be working on it first thing in the morning.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, we have that at the university, too.
All right. Thank you. Anything else?
I believe that was it.
Great job. We were safe. That's your first job.
I think we all lead a results-oriented life. And I woke up the next day, and I saw they had a mass casualty incident in Miami. I said, you know, pray for the victims, but I wanted to do what I could for my 68.1 square miles here in Daytona Beach to make sure we didn't look like what happened in Miami.
And we appreciate you guys giving up the weekends and vacation time and all that. That doesn't, should not go unsaid that we appreciate the sacrifice.
That's, that's what we sign up for. They know when they sign up to work here. We're an event-oriented town, so. But yeah, I think, I think everybody did a great job, and I was very pleased with the outcome overall. I'll just make sure, again, to make, make my notifications on the front end.
Appreciate it.
And, and as you said, and I say this to the residents, the unfortunate reality is when you get it, you get an event one time, that's one time. But now, every Memorial Day, I would say that we can anticipate this. And ahead of time, we should say in social media, expect an invasion, or what they refer to as an invasion. So that no one can say that we're surprised anymore by it.
Right.
And, you know, I read a lot of things, and I ignore a lot of things in social media. But the reality is, we are an events town, and people are going to want to come here. And they have a right to come here. And, you know, we're not going to be in the business of discouraging people. But we're going to be in the business of trying to be safe and creating an environment that just makes it wholesome and, and successful for everyone. But I do think that, that that's something that I, we need to remember next year, to all blast it out and say, we can expect that even if they haven't promoted it a day before. Because these young people can promote it in six to 12 hours. It takes them, they can, they can literally do that and get people here. So again, thank you.
Last thing, just to, just to add to that is, I think a lot of, a lot of, a lot of our residents, they don't realize that we actually vet several of these events throughout the year. This one on Memorial Day seems to be the one that draws the biggest crowd, but we actually, we have to monitor it continuously throughout the year, because there's been several takeover-style events that have popped up, and they fizzled out, and they've turned out to be nothing. So that was a stern conversation I had to have with my staff this week, too. Like, we can't just focus on the number of shares and try to guess at how many people are coming to town. So now we know, now we've established a pattern, because it was big last year, it was big this year. So just like you said, we know, if no other one, the Memorial Day weekend, that's a big one. So we need to staff up and do what we need to do. So I envision moving forward, Memorial Day weekend, my staffing will look like the truck meet will next week.
I have a question, sir. Is it possible, I know we did this on parts of Zone 3 during the last truck event, I requested it, where we had blocked off the drive-through roads, the cut-through roads. Are we doing that a little bit further down in Zone 2 also on the beach side?
We can. I have to go back and look at the ops plan to make sure we have, because you know, we have all of our neighborhood intrusion.
Right.
So we coordinate, and we block off certain things to avoid them running through the neighborhoods.
So Captain Lee and I were at a neighborhood meeting in Zone 3 about a month ago, I want to say, or Zone 2, sorry, about a month ago, and the residents were discussing traffic going through. But I appreciate you doing that for Zone 3 on beach side especially, because it's terrible. And then I'll be straight with you, people are going into residential parking lots or apartment parking lots. And what they're doing in there is not the best thing from a hygiene perspective. And so this is why it's important they notify, is just to have restrooms available, a portal, that's something like this. You know, it would be great. All right, thank you.
Quick question. When you talk about the pink passes for residents, is that residents of Daytona in general, or will it just be residents of the beach side?
It was beachside residents.
But, so for instance, the calls that I got were from hotel workers that work on this side but need to get back and forth on the beach side. They'll be included?
They qualify, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
I just wanted to make sure it was clear on the record, because I had so many phone calls. And I was over there as well, stuck in traffic. It was not a protest. It was young kids having a good time and enjoying the beach, because I had so many phone calls saying protest.
Yeah, it was, it was definitely not a protest. And that was the other reason that we went ahead and we shut down traffic on Atlantic Avenue, because when I looked at what was coming off of the beach onto the hardtop, I already knew it was going to spill over onto Atlantic Avenue, because it was just that many. So I said, we need to cut traffic northbound on A1A at Speedway, because I knew once that push came up onto the hardtop, it was going to spill over into Atlantic Avenue. So that was part of, that was part of the plan. And I just asked them, said, let's just do a slow, methodical push, and eventually we'll get everybody back to their cars. So the end result, we didn't tear gas anybody, we didn't dog bite anybody, we didn't do any of that. It was just a slow, consistent push.
Great job.
Thank you, Chief.
Very good job.
Thank you. Thank you, Team Daytona. Commissioner Devgato, anything else?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner May?
So a few things this evening. First of all, I spoke with our dear friend, Ms. Linda McGee. I had a conversation with her, and she was reminding me about the June 16 event that's coming up. But I was, with the conversation we had was about the great need of food that still exists in the Daytona Beach community. And I thought we were working toward that end. And apparently, the need continues. So if there are people who are doing food, and I see Reverend McGala in the room with us here, so I appreciate Alan Chapel always doing things in the community and other churches also. There's a couple called Pastor Victor Miles and his wife, Dan Al Miles. And they apparently have given out over 10,000, they served over 10,000 residents and families in Daytona Beach, and they continue to do it once a month. But just, just a thought for us to keep in mind, there's still people who need some help. I'd like to know with regard, I keep promoting the rental assistance program, because I think it's fantastic, how much funds is left in that rental assistance program? Because it allows us to help people with their rent if they've been impacted by COVID. So do we know how much money is left that we can still hand out if people need it? I would hate to send them to a resource that no longer exists.
We had an email just this week that highlighted it. Who can answer? Can anyone answer?
Mr. Morris.
Mr. Morris?
I don't know the number. You should have asked.
My recollection, chairman member, is that roughly $300,000 left with the expected additional money from CARES funds that are coming. Mr. Gooden, I'll get you a specific answer to the entire community manager tomorrow for Mr. Gooden. It'll be down to the dollar.
And so just-
What we have is what we expect.
Sure. I'm not sure if you know, but I know the, but could you please describe to us if people, again, just briefly, because I know people are listening at home, if you've been impacted by COVID, work, time, illness, et cetera?
We've got staff to take phone calls, deal with people, help them do the work they need to do or fill out the materials they need to fill out in order to qualify and come to the assistance. And we've got a workroom up here in the front, so people can come in the lobby to be sent they need face-to-face help or help over the phone. So there's two folks working with Mr. Gooden to take care of that. We've got other, two other people that have advanced to other positions that are also available to fill in and help. So we have the staff, have the means, and we'll be moving forward.
And we also have the Central Florida Community Development Corp., the Housing Authority, the Mid-Florida Housing Partnership, they're also working with us to this end, I believe.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So the max is $3,000 over two, over two months?
That I can't tell you.
It is. $3,000 over two months. And so if you are eligible, what kind of documentation, do you have any idea you would need to provide? Let's say I was ill or-
We can give some, we'll have an itemized list, and I can actually get you additional information so that you can distribute it all.
Yes.
We'll have that in an email to you tomorrow.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And it is, we have it.
We have it. We have it, yes. We've been doing it. And it's just so everybody can know.
Exactly.
More itemized information while other folks are listening. But they can call here. Mr. Gooden's office is there, and it's in the permits and license, licensing and city, and we'll work our way through it. We've got folks to help.
I have a question. Are we advertising, I'm sorry, along those same lines, are we advertising this information on our website?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I noticed in our last, our most recent water bill, there was a nice little flyer that was talking about some of the city information. Was that something that was on there? I can't recall. It was a two-pager.
I don't, I don't know one way or another, ma'am.
That might be something that we want to advertise as well.
It'll all be answered to you tomorrow.
And so I appreciate the fact that we have the information, and we try to share it among the community members we know. But I'm also realizing that as I have conversations, and I tell people, no, we do have help for you, we are doing something for you, they still aren't completely aware of it. I think you have to be completely desperate and then reaching out for help before you realize it. But maybe we can do a little bit better job communicating the information. Then I have a, I have a definitional question for Mr. Jagger, please. Mr. Jagger, we have a concept called functional family homes. I would like for you to please describe to me the, first, tell me and define the term for the community, then I'd like you to describe the impact of the phrase functional family homes to all of the city, please.
All right. Well, let me, let me start with how this definition came to be. Last year, there were some revisions made to your code, your land development code, to provide for reasonable accommodations to persons who are seeking exceptions to your zoning code and have disabilities. So we revised the code to provide for a process, which we had never had before, to receive applications and provide those exceptions. As part of that, we had done some house cleaning to the code as well. And one of those housekeeping matters was to revise the definition of family. So you'll recall when that came forward, there was a lot of discussion about what a traditional family is, what a non-traditional family is. And the reason the definition of family is significant is because we use it throughout the code to determine, you know, what belongs in a single-family residential house for zoning purposes. So when this came to you, we already had a definition of family. It involved one or more persons related by law, blood, marriage. That did not change. We had a maximum number of two unrelated persons. That changed to three. And then out of that conversation, there was discussion of dorm living, non-related persons living together as a family unit, unofficially adopted children living within a family setting. And so we came up with the definition for what is a functional family. And I did bring this with me tonight, so I thought you might mention it.
Okay.
So a functional family, for purposes of our code, is a group of unrelated persons that are in a nonprofit setting, which meet two criteria. They function as a single-house community unit. And secondarily, they are a permanent and stable group. And there are elements laid out into the code as, as to how those, what factors are to be considered. So the, the point here, and really for all of our definitional matters, is you want to treat light groups in a similar way. So if, if a type of use is regulated, all those similar types should be regulated in the exact same way. So for instance, if you allow a type of business in, in zoning districts, you would look at the impact on the area, and you would relate, and you would regulate all similar businesses in that same way.
A huge problem in certain parts of Zone 3 that relates to residences, many people living in one home. And so many people living in a single-family home, if they said that they were a functional family, then this would be okay?
If they met the definition of a functional family, that would be within your code.
Is there any idea of how long they have to live in the, in the home together? So remember, any single-family home in any part of the city cannot be considered a functional family home, and you can have multiple people living in this home. Is that correct?
Again, if, if they meet the definition. So it's not meant for transitional groups. So functional family by definition is, is not a temporary or seasonal association.
What is the length of time?
There's no stated length of time, but certainly, if there were a code violation, that would be a matter for the magistrate or the code board to determine if they've met the definition.
Okay. So I'm going to leave that out here for a second. The next thing I want to bring up is the trash issues that I'm having in certain parts of Zone 3. I can only speak to Zone 3, but I think it's an issue we're having in other parts of the city as well. I don't attribute this to Waispro, nor do I say that code enforcement is doing a poor job. What I am suggesting is that we are finding things like dressers and mattresses being put out on the sidewalks in certain parts of town on irregular. It's not like it's every first, every 15th, on the 30th. It's just different days of the week, which makes it really hard. So I field a lot of phone calls, as does the mayor, I think he was mentioning last time. He feels a lot, we field a lot of phone calls about the situation. So I guess I'm, I'm wondering if the functional family home concept could, is there a room for it to be abused? Is there space for it to be abused? Or is it a tight enough definition that we're not having people temporarily moving into single-family homes? And I'm going to say this, even though it's happening in Zone 3, this could happen all over Daytona Beach, as a matter of fact, not just Zone 3. So do we have anything that can help the neighbors of the situation?
I can't really speak to whether the regulations are being abused in any way. That is a question for code enforcement or for law enforcement, if they've got, if they're experiencing problems in the community. I'm not aware of that. So perhaps someone's here that can speak to that.
Okay. As it relates to trash, I will say that to be aware of, if we are receiving, and I went over this to city manager today, if we're receiving multiple complaints on properties that are being built. So it's not that we are not doing anything. Code enforcement is working very hard. But it seems, and I love some input, as hard as we're working on it, more things keep happening. And so I'm not going to say it's code enforcement, and it's not the people who are present listening. It's not the people who are trying to help the community. It's the people who aren't. So if there are any cities that have come up with ways that you can help the people who are not actually helping the rest of us, I would be open to listening to that. Right? So, so they are being billed. So I don't want you to think they're not being penalized in some way. They are being billed if we're doing chronic pickup at different times. They are getting a bill for it. So I will say that I had a very pleasant and productive meeting today with the city manager. And I had it with Mr. Jagger, and Mr. Morris was there, and Ms. Betty Goodman was there. And what I appreciated most about the experience was that we were dealing with policy, ways of dealing with policy, different issues that were relevant to Zone 3, and different ways that we could help each other. And I appreciated the shared experience today. Thank you. I'm really looking forward to spending some time with you next week, and I mean that sincerely. I left the meeting going, huh, okay then. I feel as though some of the issues I brought up pertaining to beach side, Mr. Nicholson, especially sidewalks on beach side, I'm paying attention to them, trash, code enforcement, I feel as though we're moving in a very good direction right now. So thank you so much.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Cantu?
Yeah, it just had a couple of things. One was, I'm bringing up the cell phone towers again on the west side. I'm receiving a lot of calls, and I'm very worried about emergency calls, hurricane alerts. They're having really a hard time of reception. I know, I brought it up a couple meetings ago, and I was told that I have the property, but I need to find something. I called some friends in Tallahassee. I do have AT&amp;T, I believe T-Mobile, a couple that are onboard. And AT&amp;T was already on their alert, and they're going to speed it up. I put them in touch with Mr. Morris, and he had a few people he was able to contact. So could you give us an update of what's happening? Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Tim Morris, Deputy City Manager. In respect to the subject raised, typically what you have is cell tower constructors. They build the site, they lease space to various providers. So there's an ability to put towers out to the west and provide additional service. And actually, the city had one site that was approved and ultimately not developed. and actually, the city had one site that was approved and ultimately not developed. The city now has 32 acres of property that fronts on LPGA. This land donated as a result of non-payment of taxes. It fronts on LPGA, it's adjacent to the golf course, has a good central location for a tower that should be able to be constructed at a height of 180 to 100 feet above grade. So, it's also property that could potentially be used for a park, that's a different subject altogether, but a tower can be located in such a way it doesn't interfere with the site. The two cell tower contractors that I knew about came over, did an evaluation, they had slightly different opinions in regard to the towers needed to provide current population service as well as future population. If you think of cell towers almost as an umbrella, there is, in other words, if you had a bunch of umbrellas in a room, each have an umbrella touching, they kind of work that way in terms of the signal area that they can handle. They also have loading characteristics which had a numerical point, and it depends on the tower, also the height. They're loaded to the point they can't really function further, so additional service is needed. On those towers, then providers locate their antennas and receivers and so on to service their particular customer. So, each company, AT&amp;T, whatever, all the others, would have a site on the tower for the type of construction that we're talking about. So, these contractors both indicated there would be a willingness to build a tower in that vicinity in order to provide space that could serve the area and help to cure the issues. I did have a conversation with the AT&amp;T regional representative that Commissioner Cantu had call me. They already did have it located as far as interest in their place, and knowing that there's a deficiency in the service, they're aware of dropped calls and lack of service, and depending on how we work, as we work to the north towards State Road 40, there may be additional cell towers needed as both numbers and distance grow. But pursuant to Mr. Chisholm's direction prior to Mr. Viecher coming onboard, this purchasing department has been told to write bid specifications so someone can set up to provide a cell tower site on the 32 acres that front on LPGA, and that tower would initially, presuming it's built, provide a cure to some of the service issues, and there may be another tower necessary to be located further to the north and slightly to the east in order to provide service. Contractors, and there's radio studies and so on that will be done to meet that need, but there apparently is a willingness for providers to come and construct a tower and then market that to the, when I say provider, I mean a cell tower provider, provide space to cell service providers to locate on the tower. We have, we've had the inquiry, we've had interest, and we're actually having bid specifications for an AFP prepared and purchasing even as we speak.
All right, sounds good. I would like to get a little bit of information there succinctly sent to me for my talk I have to have with some people. Just one paragraph.
You'll have, you'll have it tomorrow.
A question for you.
Yeah, I know, you know, it will be.
It'll be, it'll be there tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. My final thing is Clyde Morris, it's, it's kind of hard that road is about sidewalks, some is counties, some is state, and it's difficult. And I thought I had all that repaired, that sidewalk from Beverly Road all the way to Big Tree. I got, received a call from a professor, professor at Embry-Riddle today, and there's still a little gap, and actually, it's FDOT, and it's, I think around 1,000 feet. And I talked to Mr. Morris, and he thinks that there's something we can do, because we really need that little gap filled for the Embry-Riddle students to ride their bikes and walk. And could you explain what we can do?
Mayor Commissioner Jim Morris, Deputy Manager, I'll tell you what I believe we can do. You know, Riddle built sidewalk along Clyde Morris in the section that they are most interested in. Clyde Morris is a state road, and Riddle was able to get permission from DOT to pay for and construct the sidewalk. Rodney Cruz at Riddle was the primary person there that moved that project along. The city also notified FDOT that they had no objection to Riddle's proposal, and you know, now that walkway is there, it's very nice. The section Commissioner Cantu is talking about is a smaller section, narrower section, and so on, and I believe that if we follow the same model that Riddle used to construct the section that they did along Clyde Morris further to the north, that we could use the same model for this section of walkway, which is a fairly short section, and I was just mentioning to Mr. Holmes about it because we hadn't had a chance to talk about it, but I think that would be the way to address that if the commission is so inclined. I think it's fairly straightforward.
I have no objection to that. I mean, it sounds like something that needs to be done. No one else has any objection, then go for it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Henry?
Couple things tonight. On June 12th, we're having the dedication of the Norma J. Blay football and soccer field. Quick question on that. I know that previous city manager said that the scoreboard had already been approved for that and put in the budget, and I wanted to know if that scoreboard had been put up and if it will be there for the, for the dedication ceremony.
I don't think it's been put up, but if Keith is here, I think he can communicate.
Keith Willis, Leadership Service Director. We've already ordered it, but it has not been put up yet.
Okay, so it has been ordered. Okay, a quick question, another question while you're standing there. So, the Pop Warner and the teams that will be sharing those two fields, will it be set up that two programs can use those fields in one day, or will we be running different programs simultaneously, like the soccer and the football? What are our plans for using, how are we going to utilize both of those fields?
We tried to get the, just say the Bucks to play two games at one time, but the problem is officials. Officials don't want to drive from wherever they're scheduled to do the games and do like three games. They want to do all the games from the first team until the last team, which is at night. But then I think we'll have a problem with parking if we have two different associations come out, the Bucks and Pride or whatever. I don't think we can do two games at one time unless it's the one organization.
So, what will be the purpose of the other field? How are we going to utilize that then?
For practice. That's what we originally had for practice for soccer and football teams.
So, we can do soccer if we choose to do soccer, because I know they run simultaneously well, and flag football.
Correct.
So, the city will still be able to, because our crowd won't be as big, we'll be able to still use both fields simultaneously. I just wanted, I was concerned and asking about ways that we could save on electricity of running those big lights at nighttime for those football programs, because I know it's expensive to run those.
I don't, I think the lights don't come on until probably around October 6th, 5/36th. And that's probably the last game.
Okay. Thank you.
Congratulations on the graduation of your son.
Yes, absolutely. On June 7th, I don't know if I said this, you can come to the Neighborhood Watch at Living Faith Church at 7 o'clock, and you're going to be able to meet our new city manager, and that will be Monday at 7:00. I like to invite everyone out too. Now, he's not going to be answering any questions, he's just going to be there so that you all can meet him in a small meeting greet. So, you can't go throwing all your questions on him and your concerns on him just yet, but you'll be able to come out and say hello if you're in the, in the area. Also, just wanted to say that I did meet with the city manager, Mr. Morris for a while, city attorney, and Ms. Goodman as well today, and it was very positive and very productive, and I felt like my ideas were heard and that, that some of the things that I would like to see happen in the zone are gonna come into fruition, so I was very excited about that. Last thing is the, is the sidewalks. So, I have been wanting those sidewalks and asking about those sidewalks for years, and I am so just, I'm very excited and happy that we will be having those sidewalks coming close to, what, $800,000 project, a big deal for that zone. I don't know if you all remembered a few years ago when the young man got hit because we didn't have sidewalks and we didn't have lights over there, and so I think that this is really going to make the connection for the Derbyshire Park to the Avon Scarlet Center and make it very cohesive and very community and user-friendly. So, I'm glad to see that. Also, just last question, which is the new scoreboard at the stadium, is it an all-digital scoreboard? I know it's, the clock is added to what we already had, right? Well, I know Keith is like, oh, it's just up there. The new scoreboard, is it all digital? So, everything on it can be changed for different schools and, because I see it says home of the BCU Wildcats? And it says MEAC, and they've changed to the SWAC? I just want to make sure it's changed.
Yeah, I do think in the brief conversation that Keith is coming, I think that the university is going to change the MEAC component to SWAC, right? At their dime.
Yes.
And the, but the, the digital components as far as the, it's not going to change out to different school names.
No, it won't.
No, okay.
That's the Jumbotron we need.
The Jumbotron is actually down.
Yeah.
Right now, we're evaluating how that can be put back up, finding partners, because it is a very large expense.
Yes. All right. Last thing is, just wanted to say that I got calls about people who worked on the beachside but lived on the mainland, and so I'm glad that our police chief has done a good job of addressing that issue and making sure in the next phase of our activities that those issues will be addressed because we have lots of workers that need to get back and forth, and a lot of our workers use Uber and Lyft and those types of things, so just want to make sure that they're going to be able to get to work and from work because they don't have transportation. Transportation is a real issue for some of, for many of our residents, and thank the chief for doing a fantastic job on just making sure that the residents were safe, making good calls, and trying to be fair and balanced while doing it. And that's all my comments for tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. I too would like to, I don't know why my voice is like this. Is it sexy? I haven't spoken much today. But I too would like to welcome our new city manager, Mr. Viecher. That's all practice, Viecher. And I too had a good meeting with Mr. Viecher and with our attorney and with Ms. Goodman, and I also look forward to new things coming. And in regards to a meeting greet, the Midtown Community Development Corporation is inviting the city to come to the Dickerson Center on June 10th and to meet him. There will be a welcome reception, as well as he will address a few questions or just share his vision, and that is on June 10th at 6:00 PM at the John H. Dickerson Center. I'd like to say, you know, it's not often, Mr. Mayor, that I have to replace you or substitute for you, but I was really grateful this past week that I stood in your stead at the home of the Bulldogs, Turte Smol, in regards to Officer Willie Ann Cherillo. If you all saw in the news, Officer Cherillo single-handedly took down a robber. Chief accompanied me there. Why does Delgado still want to play taps? Memorial Day was Monday. I don't either. But Officer Cherillo, a single-handedly took down a robber and had the school shut down, and the children gave her a little parade of appreciation. She's our resource officer that is, that is stationed there, and I, this is a childhood friend of mine, so I was able to tell those young people that this was a friend of mine from their age and how she became a police explorer, then she became a communications person for the police department, and now ultimately, she's a police officer, and her daughter is one as well. So, I was really pleased to be able to do that and to recognize her for that. Then also, I want to tell you, Commissioner May and others, in regards to food, on the third Thursday of every month at the New Life Church that Pastor Goodness, the senior pastor, that the Divine Nine, which are the nine organizations, Greek, black Greek organizations, gather as well as other churches, and we give free food on every third Thursday at that church.
Have a current resource list for that at all that we know of?
I don't have a resource list of whom all is giving food, I just know that we do it every third Thursday.
I appreciate knowing that.
So, we can start with that and then perhaps just continue to ask who else is doing it and provide a list to the citizens.
And what time is it, ma'am? What time is it, please?
It starts at 10:00 AM.
Thank you.
And you have the other guy that you just mentioned, Pastor Miles.
Yes. You know what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take it upon myself to put together a listing of as many places that I can find, so if anybody is doing that, please reach out, contact me, and I'll put something together and then distribute it to you.
And I'll provide something for you regarding that. And then lastly, you all, I would like to commend Mr. Darrell Black on his second Malcolm X Day. I know we were all concerned about some of the talent that was coming. I really believe the talent didn't come that we were concerned about, but you know, when I first took the seat, one of the concerns I had for the citizens that I represented was that nothing happens in Midtown. There's no activity, no events or what have you, and I made it clear that if nothing happened, that I would start something myself, and I began the Community Unity Festival, and then we had a seafood festival, which I would like to continue in the coming year. However, Mr. Black is a community person, a young man who's striving to do something, and I know we still got to kind of coach him a little bit, but this event was spectacular. He had, the park, Daisy Stockton Park was full, full of vendors, full of families, even our new manager came by to check it out, and we gave out several different things, and it was just really a beautiful day, and there was no complaints that I heard of, and I think we need just to continue to support our young people because they are our future.
So, Commissioner Reed, in the future, if you have events that you want to partner with me with in Midtown, I would absolutely love to do something, especially around the MMV area. I was actually thinking, we were speaking earlier, I was thinking about trying to put on something, okay, I'm going to say it, hot dog base, I don't eat hot dogs, nor do I eat bread. However, everyone else loves hot dogs, and they love bread, and they love ketchup, and they love lemonade. So, if there was, if, if you knew of somebody who's thinking, maybe Mr. Darrell Black, maybe you'd want, would like to do something for us, or any other nonprofit who wants to do something like that for July 4th. If you want to partner with me, if you know of anybody, let me know. I would love to help and provide some funds for that.
Well, we have a parade on the 4th.
But I would like to know if there's maybe, even if we do it a day before, a day after, just in that community for people, just to celebrate the 4th of July.
Let's give it some thought. Perhaps our new manager will have some ideas as well. See how I threw that back on you?
I think she already has an idea, I just have to get with Keith and Mr. Morris.
All right. That concludes my comments. Good evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Trager?
Okay, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Viecher on his new job, and I'd like to congratulate the city of Daytona Beach for getting Mr. Viecher on this new job.
All right.
The Halifax Historical Museum has an exhibit right now about our fire department. It'll be running through November or till November, I'm not sure which. Mr. Driscoll, I think, would be able to tell us a little bit more about it maybe, if he gets a chance. Would you? Thank you.
Good evening, Andrew Driscoll, Deputy City Manager and Fire Chief.
Yes, Commissioner Trager. Currently, the Daytona Beach Fire Department was honored by the Halifax Historical Society with the inclusion of a, quite the exhibit, features five different exhibit boxes. If you've ever been to the museum, it's, it's worth the trip. It's celebrating our history extending back to 1898 when we first formed as Daytona Fire Department, up until 1925 when we became Daytona Beach Fire Department at our new home at 301 South Beach. It is well worth a visit, and I believe I am supposed to give a speaking engagement to the society board at some time in the near future at Fane's request. But thank you.
And the museum is located 252 South Beach Street.
If anybody would like to come by and see it. And also, I'd like to offer my congratulations to Embry-Riddle Air Nautical University Worldwide announced the graduation of Denzel Sykes with the degree of Master of Science with a major in Leadership with Distinction. He is one of our staff members, and I couldn't be more pleased, and I wish him congratulations, and I'm sure we all do. That's it.
Great, great. Okay. Okay. Bridges, we've heard from a litany of community organizations about mainly the Seabreeze Bridge and the need to have it pressure cleaned. And I know that we're in the process of beginning to figure out how much that will cost and how we can get that done. So I look forward to that. I do think that it is something that that we need to focus on because in my beachside meetings with the group that I've been meeting with, I would have to say that the number one thing that we talk about is overall cleanliness of the city. In my visits to the neighborhood groups, they talk about cleanliness the most, but they're most concerned about safety. You know, when I ask, you know, folks, that's what they say. But the thing that they talk about the most is cleanliness, be it from a code enforcement perspective or from a trash issue as it relates to trash on Seabreeze, trash on Main Street after events. The need for, I won't say excessive, but extensive pressure cleaning and just the need to totally clean up our beachside. It for several reasons, it gets dirtier than other areas. Got more people, that's one, that's visit. And two, it is a beach with salt. So it just suffers a lot of natural erosion. So I just want to encourage a continuation of staff honing in on how we can clean the beachside up. You remember back in March, and we received an article from our manager recently over the weekend about issues on Seabreeze. But I asked you guys to really start looking at the idea of 2 o'clock bar closing. And it's not that it's gone away in my head. It's just that I'm continuing to amass what I think is information that would help us to make an informed decision about it. But in the meantime, as I continue to do my personal research and prepare for what will be as a part of that discussion, a presentation, I continue to hear from residents. And I'm going to be real with you all. As we're moving forward, that's who I'm really concerned about. Is the people who live here, as well as supporting businesses. But we have to make ourselves a place where people are happy with where they live. And so I'm continuing correspondence from folks about, you know, what transpires in their neighborhoods. And so I would like for us to plan either by virtue of a workshop or by, I would prefer it to be a commission meeting, a discussion on this item for the second meeting in July. Not sure, I don't think I'll be here for the first meeting in July. And so whoever the vice mayor is, I better tell you now. Be the first meeting unless there's a way for me to run the meeting remotely. But I don't know who the vice mayor is, but I'd be happy to run it. Who is the vice mayor? If I can do it remotely, we'll talk. Is that still legal?
Yes, it's possible.
Okay.
Your absence would need to be excused by the commission, but you can appear virtually.
I will be on official merril duties. We'll be a long way away in Italy, but I will be on duty. Well, I'll be in Italy during that time, but I think that I will be available probably that evening, the time of the meeting, which is Wednesday. So I'll try to work it out in my travels for that.
You won't be here either? You're going to the other two.
Beginning of July, so from March 16th to July 15th, Zone 2 vice mayor.
Zone 2. Commissioner Delgado, so that means if I can't, we can't work that out, you'll be here. Okay, all right.
The 21st.
So but I would like for us in the second meeting in July to discuss this. And I know it'll be a robust discussion, but it's worthy of our attention. It's worthy of our energy and our consideration, considering all things. And my thought initially is, not that we do it immediately, but that we would roll this in perhaps a year away from now. So you give businesses a year's time to be prepared for the adjustment if we make the decision to go with it. Now, in my conference call with the United States Conference of Mayors this week, and we have conference calls weekly to discuss a litany of ideas and issues. But right now, we're really discussing American Rescue Plan Funds. There is discussion, and you all know that last week, last commission meeting, we approved acceptance of half of the rescue funds from the federal government, which is in excess of $7 million, I think somewhere like $7 and a half million. Well, there is a fear on our part, and we fought, we lobbied very hard and lobbied very hard to get those funds. So one of the biggest components of being a part of the Conference of Mayors is being able to lobby for things that are beneficial to our community. And we lobbied very hard for those funds. But there is fear that now many senators want to take the second half of the money away. All right, they've committed to the first half and we received the first half, but you know it's on a two-year basis. So the second half, they want to, some people want to take that and roll it over into President Biden's plan for infrastructure. Because one of the primary ways to spend this money is on infrastructure. Well, of course, the cities, we don't want to do that. It's $65 billion going to cities across America. We want it, we want both. We have infrastructure needs, but we also have needs as it relates to, you know, COVID and responding to COVID. And so they are saying that because the recovery is in full throttle, we don't need it. The economic recovery in society. Of course, we don't agree with that, so we're gonna fight and continue to fight for it. The main thing that I want to talk about now is as it relates to the funding. We talked a lot about how we can use these funds. And some of the things that we've been talking about, one of the things that we all agree, here's the issue. If we don't have a good plan, and what I don't want us to do is to rush the expenditure. But we need to have a good plan that we can communicate to our state senators, our senators, not state senators, federal senators, as well as the senators across the country who are sort of on the fence. So the first thing that I would like for us to start working on is writing a letter to the two senators that we have from Florida and ask them to support not rolling the second amount of funds over into into the infrastructure bill that the president is pushing. That's the first thing. The second thing that we have to do as a commission with staff is to develop a plan for how we're going to use both funds. The first set as well as the second set. So I think we need a comprehensive plan so that we can communicate that, one, to the residents, but also so that we can communicate it to the elected officials who are making the decision. So that they'll know that we have viable plans for recovering our community. Because this is really what this is about. It's about providing recovery in the communities, economic recovery. And I, some of the things that I'm going to mention here in just a moment include everybody in Daytona Beach. How can we make sure that we are using these funds to help small businesses, to help residents, to help children? And I know that sounds strange to some of us, but one of the things that we talked about, and this will be my lead-in point, and it's not at the top of my list. But we all, I think, before I get into that, I'll say this. We need to have a workshop, I think, as it relates to these funds. And that way you can begin to talk with staff about ideas that you have. But in addition to a workshop, I think that it is critical that we have three community round tables where after we have our own workshop, we can go out to the community and we can say, these are some things that we are considering. Now, we want you to tell us what you are considering and what you think, not only of our ideas, but of ideas that you might have. Because one of the reasons that we failed in the half-cent sales tax is that we didn't really allow residents to say what they thought we should spend the money on. We told them what we thought they should, we should spend the money on if we got it. What I think we should do is we should have a plan to say, these are some things that we're considering. But we should have a meeting at the Sneedley Center. We should have a meeting at Midtown Center. And then we should have a meeting at the Police Department. Three community meetings to share thoughts, just to say, these are things that we've talked about. Now, how do you, what do you think about what we think? And then tell us what you think, if you have some other ideas. And then we come back with a comprehensive plan of how we want to spend this money to the benefit of all of Daytona Beach, to the benefit of everyone. Now, here are some of the things. And we, as mayors, believe that one of the things that will be favorable to those who are making decisions is that we, all of us, a lot of us have literacy programs for our children. What we discussed was the possibility of us using some of the funds to extend literacy programs to our children where we would give the children who participate in a literacy initiative bonds for $100. So in other words, if you, and we might be able to partner with the county because it could be done through the library or it could be done in part through the mayor's literacy initiative. Because we have a plan to use our community centers for our children to read or for me to read to the children, five to seven. But we could possibly say to the rest of the children, and we may want to do it even with kids, parents who agree to say that they may want to read to their kids 10 books within a span of time. If you read 10 books to your children, we will give you a savings bond for the child of $50 or $100 that could go to the child's education or to whatever the parents need. One of the reasons that we, as mayors, agreed that this is a beneficial program is because the children have truly suffered and will continue to suffer loss, academic loss. And we need to figure ways that we, as a community, can help to offset some of that loss by incentivizing them over the summer where we know the children in our community tend to lose grade levels because they are not exposed to literacy. They are not reading over the summer. So I would say, let's put that on the list of consideration. And it's at the top of my list, but not the very top. I also would like to add to that third grade incentive for getting our third graders, all third graders, who by the end of the summer could come to us and say that they have mastered their proficiency in multiplication. It's a critical age that they learn multiplication because children who don't learn multiplication by third grade, they show deficits all the way through school. Because it's, you know, a base understanding of math principles. It's you're always going to use your multiplication tables for everything. So if we could somehow find a way to possibly incentivize all of our third graders to be able to master their multiplication tables. Now, before I move any further, are we in agreement that we should have this community discussion? And if so, we need to do those quickly. It doesn't mean now we can't do the, because we can't spend some of the funds. We don't have to have total community buy-in because I don't want us to wait on them. We got to get a plan as it relates to the summer because that's the time when we need to make sure the kids are learning.
Can I, can I ask a question? So I'm curious, are we planning on, are we planning on taking the funds and then just using them unilaterally across the city? Are we looking to do it different zones? Are we looking to say certain areas have different needs and we address those areas? Are we looking for areas that benefit the most people? How are you looking to utilize the funds, sir?
I think that, at the end of the day, is a decision that we would have to make to say, how? And what I'm starting to conversation with things that I think we should consider. I do think we should try to benefit in part, remember if you money that is infused in a community doesn't necessarily just impact the folks at that one level. It trickles throughout a community when you spend money. So I think that's really for us to decide, though. You know, but I do think that we should try to find ways that the money, and you'll see from my list of things that I'm gonna talk about, that it really encompasses all of our, the whole city. But I do think that we should find ways to touch as many people as we can. So
Mr. Mayor, may I ask? I'm sorry, may I ask a question? Just for point of clarification, you say we have received the first?
I don't know if the money has been coming, but we approved, except the.
Yes, we have received the first installment. It's $7.000, some million dollars. 7.5. The Deputy City Manager, Fire Chief, has a memo into my office that I'm going to review that tells what you can spend the funds on and how. And I'll be sending that out probably to the commissioner sometime tomorrow before the end of the week, based on our discussions. But he has lined out what it can be spent on, looked at, listened to many of the priorities you all have had over the past couple of months and making recommendations with assistance of senior staff based on your all comments. So you'll get a list of what it can be spent on. And if you all direct us to start scheduling meetings, we'll do that. By that time, you'll have a list of what it can be spent on and then make your decisions. We go back out. But he has a very good memo saying what it will be. $7.5 million has been received by the city and it's been set aside, waiting on your direction.
Okay.
Okay. And most of the things that I'm talking about have been vetted. Some of them have not, but most of them have been vetted as it relates to being. But I want you all to think about it. Now, here's, you could have high-profile and essential program. You remember we had the Summer Youth Program? Where we employed, and that didn't cost that much.
It didn't.
It cost us $30,000 to employ. I don't know how many kids we employed, but we, you know, that's not that much money. But you could have a Summer Youth Program and you could employ young people throughout the city as we did a few years back and give them some jobs, teach them some responsibility. And it also, our kids suffered during COVID. They suffered from the lack of connectivity. Their social skills and they need, we need to find ways to, you know, help bridge that gap between adult and child. They were, a lot of them only connected to their parents for a long period of time. And so that's another possibility. Affordable housing. Of course, that is one that we could expend some of the money on. And then we also have to remember that the more of it that we prove that we've already used, the more of it, it becomes free to use on whatever we want, but that's too much in the weeds. A water taxi has been discussed. There's a possibility that you could use some of, because you want to stimulate business. You could use, you could possibly have a water taxi. And yesterday I talked to my mechanic and he said the same thing that obviously Ms. Ruby's been saying for years about a water taxi. And he's been harassing me about a water taxi for years. You could conceivably have a water taxi, I believe,
To EXI?
To, as a part of, as something that you could, to stimulate business.
Could I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Do we have a list, please, of, do we have a list of where we've expended the most funds? Because I think that would be the biggest area of need. What has been the biggest area of need and you wouldn't know right now during the COVID era where we spent that money? Just curious.
We'll be, we'll attach that to the memo.
Okay. You could use some of the money to encourage people to be vaccinated. We don't want to lose sight of the fact that, and there may be the possibility of a rebound for folks as it relates to, a rebound as it relates to COVID, rebounding as we move forward. of a rebound for folks as it relates to, a rebound as it relates to COVID rebounding as we move forward. A cell phone, part of this money, and I don't know, and it's something staff could look into. We, you know, I've been looking at it from a, Senator Joe Manson wants a lot of it to be used because he's in rural areas. So he wants a lot of it to be used on infrastructure as it relates to technology and broadband. So is it possible in Zone Four? We know we need to enhance and increase the broadband for that community. Is it possible for us to use some of that money to incentivize, to get someone to come in and build the towers that we need, or a tower? But that's another, and these are needs that we have talked specifically about. Bus benches. You know, and I know I'm, I'm, I'm talking, but we got, you know, we want to help people who are, who are, who are disabled. And when I say, and, and I, I mean, everyone should be touched in some way by this money. We have, and I asked staff to pull these numbers for us today. We have, I think it was 188 residents who are on a waiting list in Daytona Beach to get home repairs. I think 98 of them need their roofs repaired. 98 people need their roofs repaired. The average roof to be repaired is, was somewhere in the neighborhood of $15,000. I know that doesn't necessarily affect as many people as we might like, but it affects the people who need it the most. And if you can help 98 people to save their homes because they have roof damage, I personally believe that's a big, big deal. A big, big deal. Because they're already on a list where we're currently able to only help maybe 12 people a year is what they're telling me. So I, I think that that's, you know, something that is, is, is critical. We could fund little libraries in the neighborhoods. I had a group last week talking to us about little libraries. And, and some of these don't cost a lot. Of course, affordable housing costs a lot, but I think that's our biggest priority. We've said that as a community. So I think that, that to me is a given, that we should expend some of, some amount of it. Now, I will, of course, my list probably goes on and on. And I know I've missed some of them that I think are most important. Here's one I don't want to forget. We talked about the earnings that Commissioner Delgado mentioned on Seabreeze Boulevard. We could incentiv, if we want to do it. This is a way, and we talk about, and it's, oh, this is one I can't forget. The art districts that we want to fund. We got, we, we should be able to use some of this money to fund arts. Because we want the communities to wake up. We want to activate some of the properties in the communities. And so let's think outside of the box. Let's listen to our residents. But these are just a few of the probably 50 or 60 other ideas I've thought of to use some of these funds on. But, and I don't want to beat a hog, but I have certainly thought of, there's no community or neighborhood that I haven't thought of in some way to say that we should, you know, be getting these funds. And, and maybe I'll just write my list and send it, send them to Bob and he can forward them off to you all. But let's, let's listen to our residents. And let's make a big splash with this money and reinvest it in the, in, in those who matter the most. The people in Daytona Beach and the small businesses. And if you have no further questions, does, are we all in agreement about the need to listen to the residents? And that that should be done as, as quickly as possible? That we should listen to them and then, at the same time, plan for our own workshop, starting with staff's email that they will come, which will give us ideas. Any questions or comments?
I just want to make a comment. But definitely, I think the more we involve our residents, the better it is. Because I think a lot of our residents are extremely smart and have extremely great ideas that we might not have thought of. And I definitely think that idea of involving the residents is a terrific one.
Are we going to Zoom this so residents who cannot come personally but prefer watching from home can also participate? And then are we planning on making this a marketing campaign to let people know? Because oftentimes, the same people show up. And I would always, always looking for different voices as well.
I am too. I agree with that, always looking for different voices and finding ways to have people to trust what we're doing. And a part of the way that you do that is by communicating and listening. You know, you know, the first promise I made when I ran for office was to listen before I asked anybody to listen to me. So I, I want to, let's listen to what people have to say. But I do think that we need staff to also, because we can't wait. Now, the one idea that I do ask is that we begin immediately working on some way of doing the, the literacy part. Because you can't wait. If you wait on that, summer will be gone and our opportunity will be lost.
As you were talking about listening, they say, an old adage says, that's why we have one mouth and two ears.
That's right. That's right. That's right. So are you all okay with staff starting as it relates to literacy, some initiative? Or if you're not, tell me.
Mr. Mayor? I support that.
Oh, yes, sir. As you know, my sorority also came and read at your literacy program.
Okay. All right, well, I, I think we can say that you guys, and if you need, if, if you need some, some effort from me, I'd be happy to engage with staff on this item. But I, I think that, you know, and, and there are many ways to do it. But you do have to, I do think a part of it is incentivizing your children.
Into this, how much are we looking to spend on this?
Well, that's the thing. I want to make sure that it, it is part of the requirements that we can utilize those funds. And then we will probably put that in the memo, working with staff to see that you all can send back to us and give us ideas. And try to move it forward. So we don't have a number. I need to look and see what can be done based on the numbers of the $50 or $100 bonds. We'll make some recommendations back to you all before we move forward with spending any of those funds.
I think it's important, if we're going to truly talk about literacy, we want to make sure in the summertime, the biggest issue is access to books. Everybody can't get to the library. In fact, most children that you're talking about, talking about incentivizing won't make it to the library. There's nobody to take them. So I think as, as a part of ensuring that this is successful, access to books has to be at the forefront.
Do we have interlocal agreements? This is a question for staff. With the library system that provides locations for pickup and drop offs from, at arts facilities like Yvonne Scarlett, Midtown, Beachside. If we have those, we can work to coordinate where students can pick up their books from those facilities and drop them back off, turn off. If there's an agreement where they have a system that goes back and forth to those facilities.
And let me also share that during the Malcolm X Day, Volusia County had, I don't know how, they had tubs of books, but they gave us 14 tubs of books. And we had leisure services to come and get those books for our kids to be used during the summer. I'm talking those big blue tubs from the county. I returned the 14 tubs. But staff took those books, so those are available to us this summer as well, for children.
Great. All right, yeah. And, and keep in mind, all of those ideas have to be fully vetted. About what you could expend the money on, the Treasury has been slow to really define it. But I also think that once we get a cohesive plan, we want to do our part to make sure that we are able to advocate for ourselves. Appreciate you all indulging me in, in these matters. Mr. Manager, do you have any, well, first, before I say that, I didn't, I didn't have, get Ms. Goodman or Bob, they didn't come to my meeting. Or Jim Morris. No, but I, I, I prefer my meeting to be in secret. So they always talk about secret meetings in, in the community. But welcome.
Well, you made me come down to your office and they didn't have a place to sit.
Oh, they got a place to sit. There's three seats in there. There's three seats. But at any rate, sincerely, I'm excited to work with you and you are, you are welcome. You're in a place that wants you and that is prepared to, to work with you and to, to embrace your leadership as our manager.
Thank you very much. And I will say that I feel welcome. Staff has been exceptional in providing me with insight on where we are. And hopefully, the communications that you've received from me have been appropriate. I'll continue to try to give that. And also, the citizens that have communicated with me. I will say that we should hire Commissioner Cantu as a PIO. She kept me informed on the weekend on everything. So that, I, I-
I was there.
I, I will give you that. But we did have something that staff provided to me, that we do have a notification system on our website that we're going to push out as much that you can actually be, get text alerts. If you sign up for our system, that you can get notified for all commission meetings, code enforcement, magistrate. There's an emergency for road closures that you can be alerted to on that system. Calendars and different news flash from the Fire Department, the Police Department, and also purchasing. So we'll send a lot of that stuff out. And not only just send it out through our social media platform, but as I go to these different meeting greets and community meetings, we'll make sure that there's there. And if there are meetings in your zone where you want a staff member to come to that zone or talk, let me know so we can work it out and make sure that you can take materials as, Commissioner May has asked for some materials that will be beneficial for a meeting she's going to. We can make sure that not only the material is there, but if you need a, a senior staff member to go to that meeting as well, let me know and I'll make sure that they can come in. I know that Captain Lee with Code, I mean, he told me I can go with any, to any meeting with him. And I'm glad he carries, you know, weapons if I need protection. But, 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 but I will go with them. The chief has one more statement, and I'll just say that I am excited about working with the organization. I will be sending out a memo to all of you that deals with the transition plan for me and staff of how we're going to go about communicating to our citizens, how we're going to try to engage them and work with you all to accelerate the visions and goals and objectives that you have based on the constituents that you come in contact with every day. And those community meetings that we're going to try to coordinate just to hear ideas from the citizens and let the, the staff and meet the new, meet the citizens. And also be prepared that I can bring something to you all in January about how we move forward based on the ideas and the, the, the direction we've gotten from the people like you in office. I'm open, you can call me anytime you want. And I think you have all my cell phone numbers and the citizens have it because the Communications Department decided to put it on the website with my resume.
I will tell you that during this whole event this weekend, I was calling the City Manager. I said, are you on duty yet, sir? And he said, if you're not, you are now. I have questions, I have concerns, let me know if I can help you. And he picked up the phone. He knew it was me and he picked up the phone and I thought that was great.
I did, and she said, well, I'm here. So if you need anything, I'm, I'm here. So I, I do appreciate it. You have a great staff. I know you probably know that. Unless they're putting on, they are the best actors and we should get an award for the Broadway production. But we'll, 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 we'll look at some efficiencies and effectiveness to make us much better. But I've, I've worked in two municipalities and I will say that I'm excited to work with these individuals and figure out how we can make sure that the citizens and the visitors and business owners believe in us and that you all support us as well. Because we're going to push your agenda forward based on the direction you get from the people that elected you to office. Chief?
You already covered it for me. I just wanted to circle back to that about the text alerts. Because I got the same text message saying, hey, we already have that. So I should have known that the only other thing is that the residents have to sign up for it. So Susan has already went back and pushed it to the front page. So once you log on to City of Daytona Beach website, you scroll down till you see the circle with the envelope in it and it says notify me. And that's where you go and you can sign up for the text alerts. But that was it. And then also, we're going to have our, it's notify me. It's on the front page of the city's website. You just scroll down until you see the circle with the envelope on it. Says notify me and you can, you can sign up for it. And then the, the other thing was that we also are going to have the Emergency Operations Center open next Saturday as well for the event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I had one more thing. That veteran ceremony that was rescheduled for June 26th at seven o'clock. And I believe it's the tribute band of Billy Joel. It is, okay. But it's been rescheduled.
Okay. All right, I need to also say that the last commission meeting, Commissioner Cantu essentially asked for an alms budsman. And that responsibility has been assigned to Kimberly Flattery. She's a project manager in the Permits and Licensing Department who has more than 20 years of experience in real estate land use regulations and development. In this new role, she will serve as a single point of contact during the process of opening a small business in Daytona Beach. Thank you to staff for executing this so quickly. And thank you to Commissioner Cantu for bringing the need to our attention. We had one when Commissioner, Commissioner before was here. And somehow it, once he left, the position left. Lents, yeah. So we had an alms budsman for this purpose. So I'm glad that it has been restored. And thank you for bringing it to our attention. And again, thank you to you and staff for getting this done. I mean, I don't know if anything has ever been done this fast in City Hall. But it is, it is appreciated that it is done. And we want our, our small businesses to be successful and to, to not have the red tape. It's, it's, you know, we have tape, it's part of what we do. But let's not make it all red, let's make it clear. So people can see where they're going. All right.
Curious. Will the, I know we've been talking about this for a while. Will this person be coordinating with the Chamber of Commerce also? Because many people come through the Chamber of Commerce and there's a disconnect that goes on. And I think the City Manager previously was trying to work with Ms. Kiefer and the Chamber to try to put something together. And also, I would highly recommend that the new position also connect with Dr. Chester Wilson. He does a business startup with the Small Business Development Center with the school organization, as well as with Mr. Leslie Gescom. And these are all business entities that help small businesses develop. Then also, does this person have a business card yet? I would love to distribute the business card to as many young people that we can get a hold of who are interested in starting businesses in the area, especially Epathine Cookman. So if I could get some business cards, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Question, who does she report to?
Two more, Sir Jim.
Okay. And then I also would like to remind you all of the Midtown Music Concert Series beginning on June 12th at the Daisy Stocking Park. Come out and hear the Seventh Street Band on June 12th from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m.
All right. Thank you. It's a great day to be a resident of Daytona Beach. Good night.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go ahead and start a public comment forum. If everyone can sit down.
Ladies and gentlemen, please have a seat. We're going to start public comment.
Our first speaker is Benjamin Smith and on deck is John Nicholson. Is Mr. Smith? Yep.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Benjamin Smith. I purchased some property, I think that's the first thing on the list. I purchased some property from the city which belonged to my aunt, my Aunt Sarah Scott. They demolished the house. This, it had been, it had been condemned and everything. They demolished it and it was supposed to haul off all of the debris. What they did was dig a hole and buried it. I dug up slab of, 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 of foundation. I tried 10 feet by 10 feet in a few places and I couldn't put a oak tree in it. Okay, that's enough for that. Nine, nine, three, nine, Niles Street, N-I-L-E-S. I've also put a, put a garage on there. I've also put a garage on there and planted partial of the garden. So I just want to finish my sprinkler system out to manicure it, and I can't get below ground. The next shocking thing, I'm retired military this April. My last mission was to assist getting Sergeant Hussein out of Quake. I run in fuel over there. I'm not too much afraid of anything, but this is one thing that shocked me. And this place is permanent. April, April 18, 2021, a red and white Sportster plane dived down at the house from the southeast and pulled up going toward a shady place. Came in like this. He didn't go below the tree line because he wouldn't be able to. Straight up he go out. On May 17.
I'm finished. I'm not sure, but go ahead.
On, on May 17, at 12:00 a.m. in the morning, a helicopter stood still over the house, circled over the golf course, fence line, came back over the house at least three times for about 15 to 20 minutes. What they are doing, I don't know. But it interests me why my house, they come over the house, every one of the student planes come over blaring that throttle full force.
So, sir.
I just want to let somebody know.
Okay. All right. Are you saying that it's Ember Riddle?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you. No.
I have a phone number.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granby Avenue. Welcome, Mr. Viecher. I hope all of your meetings go this quickly. I know. Well, they're not 3:00 in the morning anymore either. I went to the county council meeting yesterday, and the tower was brought up. It's supposed to brought it up, and they were talking about several areas in which there were dead zones. The development will be going south from LPGA through the golf courses all the way down to ISB. So I'm asking you to think about it now to find locations for cell towers because there's no sense in having all those homes out there and everybody complaining that they don't have cellphone usage when we can plan it in advance. Also, I was reading an article two months ago about how they hide the cell towers so they're not as obnoxious. So if we could do that, that would be great. Secondly, my neighbor is concerned with the noise. I just put $150,000 into his house, and they're not quite used to the noise. And there's traffic on A1A all night long, on every weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and it appears there are no police officers until 3:00 in the morning when the bars close down. So what he's suggesting, and which happened in his previous community, a 25 mile an hour tourist zone, safety zone, going from Seabreeze to ISB, it slows down the traffic so they don't have all that zooming. I know he was upset when they closed Oak Ridge. They were coming in front of the house, especially the trucks, going at that 40, 50, 70 miles an hour, trying to get down to the short strip to the parking garage and get back on A1A. But the speed on A1A in that location is excessive, so he would like to slow it down to 25. And, Mr. Viecher, we have literally seven downtowns in the city of Daytona Beach. We had three cities, and we had three sections in Midtown. Everybody wants something. The boardwalk, A1A, there's Seabreeze, there's Main Street, there's, ISB is coming down the Pike, you've got MLK, you've got Beet Street, you've got Second Avenue. So keep your fingers crossed and good luck.
Our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson, and on deck is Patricia Hurd.
Marjorie Johnson, 122 South Key Street. I'd like to welcome our new city manager. It's a pleasure to have you here in our city. And you was correct tonight when you say they're the best actors because they have not been listening and they have not been accessible to our constituents and the residents of Daytona Beach. I've been at this podium many times asking them to pave the street in front of the Phil and Clippin University, and nothing has been done about that. They went up there and they paved the street. They stopped at Langley Street, and they didn't go across. And they had a meeting out in the Daisy Stocking Park, and I spoke with the man on Bellevue and asked him, "Why didn't you finish that street?" I've been to this meeting since Derek was being the mayor. He's in his third term, addressing this problem. But he said the people didn't vote for the half cent tax. I didn't. I'm glad it didn't pass. They're tired of paying taxes, and the work is not getting done. I'm on the library board of Volusia County, the Children and Services Board, the Human Services Board, and the library at City Ave need to be paved. Go up and look at the pavement. The city is responsible for that. And big holes are in the pavement out there. It's been there for many years, and we've addressed that to no avail. We need them to do the work that we are paying them to do to make it happen. And I've been at this podium many times and addressed that. Phil and Clippin is pumping millions of dollars into our economy, and that is her zone, and she knows that it needs to be done. You go up there and look at it. And when they stopped down here, they should have went all the way through. They would never let that street look bad in front of the Speedway or Brown and Brown. So they need to invest the money in all of the communities. So I'm also concerned about the fact that they're closing these meetings down and letting us speak after adjournment. We never had this before under Scarlett Golden, Cherry Kelly, or none of the other mayors. They took our three minutes away. The people that did it are gone. Kelly White, Yellow Land, and the city manager. We never had that in all other towns have the people speak in the meeting, not after. This is discriminatory. I'm a former president of NAACP, and I would never allow anything like this to happen under my watch. So I would say to you tonight that we would like some of these problems to be addressed. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Patricia Hurd, and on deck is Stephen Miller.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Hurd, 822 Vernon Street, Daytona Beach, Florida. I just have a few things that I want to call to your attention, and I did this before for number one, posters on light poles around town advertising activities and things that would take place where at one point they stopped and now they have started back. Is there some way we can find a telephone number, go there, whatever? Number two, I'm still concerned about the layout of the street on MLK and Orange Avenue. When you were going west on Orange Avenue and turn north on MLK, you better be careful. I'm just waiting for a terrible accident there. The space there, I've never seen it before. I mentioned that before. Parking on yellow lines, or should I say yellow curves at intersections, especially at Cedar Street and MLK is very dangerous because these people don't know what a white line is at a stop sign. They go over, and we cannot see what's coming. So we need to check that, please. And also, they are crazy drivers going around on double gold lines. I was taught that you don't go around when you see double lines, but that's what they're doing using MLK as a racetrack. And even on Orange Avenue two days, there's someone in the middle lane, the turn lane, they speeding, they running, they going. So I don't know what is going to be done there, but they're using it as a Speedway. And I'm also concerned about 18-wheelers parked on MLK South Street and other places in Midtown down there. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You, too.
Our next speaker is Stephen Miller, and on deck is Suzanne Odina.
Good evening. My name is Steve Miller. I'm a resident of 383 Walnut Street, Daytona Beach, Florida. Couple of things I wanted to say. Great meeting, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Delgado, and I always wanted to say this, and I wanted you to hear this, too. I'm so happy because when I come here, I get a chance to say hello to the city mothers of Daytona Beach. A lot of folks have city fathers, but we have a lot of city mothers. But Mayor, you're still in charge here, but it's okay. And I feel wonderful about this city because of the makeup of our commission here. I think you guys are one of the most diverse commissioners in the entire state of Florida, and I'm happily be a part of this city. I wanted to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, about your interest in illiteracy of our babies. And third grade is very critical years, and I have a friend of mine who, like your wife, came up with a musical, a little tone to teach these kids how to do math. And the program is free, and I'd love to get with you so that we can try to get a pilot program going so we can make sure that our babies, when they go back to school, they know all of the timetables, and they do it by rap, and they do a wonderful job. I also want to say welcome Derek Viecher, city manager of beautiful Daytona Beach, Florida. You know what? I never thought I'd ever see a day like this. So I was home looking at this meeting from my bedroom, and I went, "Wait a minute. They closing the meeting that early?" So I jumped up and got dressed and just to come here to say, you know, hello, welcome, and commissioners, thank you for the decision that you guys made of bringing Derek to the city of Daytona Beach. As you all know, that he's very involved. He's, he want to be on the scene. He don't misholli anything, and I think we have a winner as our city manager. So I pray that you guys do a wonderful job and continue to do what you're doing. And like I said, 100 years ago, on the first, Wall Street was burnt down. 100 years plus a day, we hired our first black city manager. So I'm truly excited. And to my police chief, thank you. I just love it when we have an awesome weekend and we don't have to read anything negative about our city. Nothing that happens in other places happens in Daytona Beach. We have always had a wonderful department, and thank you and our public works as well. I have three minutes, and number two. I will.
Our next speaker is Suzanne Odina, and on deck is Jim Schultz.
Hey there. I'm Suzanne Odina. I live at 716 North Wild Olive, and I want to say, you know, I can have you all on speed dial, and I do, but to have you all respond with speed is just amazing for Aaron, for the mayor, for Captain Trish, for Captain Lee. Y'all are terrific. And thank you, Jakari, for keeping our neighborhood off the news. My helicopter kids really don't like me living over here, and they'd really be upset. But now, don't tell them what I'm telling you all now. We've had a tough time in Seabreeze neighborhood the last month. If I look a little tired, I am. We had people waking us up at 3:00 in the morning, coming down our street from Seabreeze. We've had people sleeping on our bushes. We've had people peeing on our lawn, pardon the French. We've had people coming over our fences. I, you know, I'm so glad that we're all out again, but I don't know about the homeless people. I thought they were always out. Now there just seems to be more and more of them. We've got needles on the school grounds that they're picking up. And again, we just like to be in a quiet neighborhood, and I, again, thank you so much for being so responsive.
Thank you, and thanks for letting us know.
Oh, and we want the bars to close it, too.
Bet you do.
Our next speaker is Jim Schultz, and on deck is Linda Smiley.
Jim Schultz, 117 Harvard. I see a few new faces. Good to see them. Anyways, I just noticed something a few weeks ago. Something's missing from Daytona. It's not uncommon, but anyways, the TikTok that had the Veterans Museum that migrated to Holly Hill. So if anybody wants, and Light of Memorial Day, I started with that. Anyways, they set up a good setup there on A Street, real close to center, so people can go see it at the Disabled American Veterans. The other point was the federal lawsuit on Toxic Substance Control Act is proceeding. The next session will be in August. They just had a session, Ninth District Court, I believe, San Francisco. Judge Chen has not been happy with EPA so far. They've been recalcitrant or unable to actually give hard data on a safe dosage for at-risk children to avoid neurotoxic damage. They said it wasn't within their abilities to do that. He said it should become, and he recommended that it, they be able to come up with some data that would show a safety factor. We'll see what happens. And I was just curious, as far as being updated, as far as Daytona, if they were still having that problem with their sodium fluoride, as far as they had to stop using it after several attempts because it jammed the equipment. I think it's all for the better because neurotoxic damage, you know, a few IQ points here and there, what's it mean? It means an awful lot in the big picture. And besides, Sweden just came out with a fantastic new study showing, nothing we hadn't known before, if post-menopausal women would like to have a hip fracture, fluoride can give you a 50% higher frequency of that, and we all know what the outcome is at for too often. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Linda Smiley, and on deck is Ann Ruby.
Linda Smiley, 357 Manhattan. I wanted to thank Commissioner Cantu for the quick response to fixing the water system issue over at Midtown Cultural Center. That was put out on Facebook that you've got something on order for that. And so I'd also like to suggest, where else could we put some of those watering systems? I can think of all the cultural centers that we have here, the rec centers, and also here at City Hall. Now we could get rid of those single-use plastic bottles and, you know, save our planet somehow. In regards to the veterans going to Holly Hill, that's another big win for them, for Holly Hill, with pickleball and now, and now the Veteran Center, and another big loss for us. So I'd like us to think of ways to keep things like that in our city and stop letting them go to other cities. We have to look at the big picture here, and I think we're failing in that issue. We lost pickleball as well because we were close-minded about using some of the courts around town when they came here to ask about that. There was a lot of discussion, and there's a lot of courts that are not being used for tennis that could have been used for pickleball, and now they're getting million-dollar events in their city that we're losing out on. So something that we need to think about. I'd like us to think of a way that when you drive down A1A and different big streets here, without a sign saying "Welcome to Daytona," you know that you're entering and leaving Daytona just by the way the streets look. So that's an issue. And I'd like us to... And I'd like us to think about putting us back in, the citizens back in the regular meeting. I think that's long overdue. I personally called every other city in Volusia County, every single one. I didn't skip any, and we're the only city that does that to their citizens, the only one. And on that note, welcome, Mr. Fiecher.
Thank you. Somebody gets a welcome.
And our final speaker tonight is Ann Ruby.
Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. The only constant in life is change, and we're just undergoing a great big change. Welcome, Mr. Fiecher. I am really looking forward to the changes that can happen in our city, and I'm looking forward to your leadership. Thank you, guys. Thank you for choosing him. Good night.
Thank you. All right, Daytona Beach, have a great night and a magnificent journey.